Just wanted to check, can people hear us on the phone? Hit star six to unmute yourself to say if you can hear us. Hello?
I can hear you guys, yep.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Alright, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. I believe we have Pastor over Harris there, Darren.
So I'm Darren Fikema. I am the pastor at St. Charles Parish. And I just want to say, as I drove in this morning, I don't get to come to Winter's Day every day. What a beautiful day, what a beautiful drive. It's just great to be in Madison County. So, let's pray. Oh God of creation, oh God over all, we start this day, we start each day with gratitude and thanks to you. You watch over us, you share with us, and you provide. Your love is never ending, and we thank you for all of your grace. A summer seems to be winding down, and we thank you for this, we thank you for this beautiful day, this beautiful day in Madison County, a great summer that will soon be behind us in what looks like a bountiful harvest. We are grateful for your daily blessings, and we want you, thank you for your never-ending presence. Lord, in our world today, we pray for peace. Peace in a struggling domain. In all that our world struggles with, we need your guidance and your direction, and we, we ask for your blessings and help for each of us as we come together, as we work together. We are a nation built on faith and belief, and Lord, we ask that you continue to direct our work, guide our leaders, strengthen our actions in all that we do. We pray for wisdom in our world, we pray for guidance in the matters at hand, and we ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and fairness. Help us on this special election day to align with you, your plan, and always focus on you. Give us the desire to find ways to excel in your efforts, not just today, but every day. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible)
All right, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote. Just a roll call.
Here.
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 Alright. Remove the agenda. Any disclosure of conflict of interest? I know we had a requested amendment to the agenda for additional claims that needed to be paid that the first deputy sent us. So, I don't, I don't see any conflict of interest. Do you guys see any conflict of interest? Otherwise, I'll just entertain a motion to amend the agenda to add those additional claims.
So move to amend the agenda, add the claims.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Next, we have the consent agenda. We have the approval of the agenda, minutes and claims, and receive and file items. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Alright, we are now at the public hearing for the Camp Jones subdivision. Ryan, did you want to go ahead and do a presentation?
Sure.
Oh, thank you for that. Do I have a roll call to enter into public meetings?
So move to entering the public here.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
We are in the public meeting at 9:30 AM.
Good morning. Brian Holbar, Madison County's only administrator. This morning, I've got a Camp Jones subdivision plat, it's two, two lots currently. This property has, it's already in parcel A and parcel B, it's already in two lots, it's just not very efficient the way that it's set up to be able to build a, build an additional home on there. Suzanne, let's see, the applicants of this subdivision request are the daughter and son-in-law of the property owner. This 32.33 acre tract is already divided into two parcels as stated, parcel A and parcel B, in section two of Scott Township. However, the layout of the existing parcels isn't ideal for the additional, an additional home to be constructed on, therefore, they desire to reconfigure the layout of these two parcels. Current legal use, this is a, there's an existing home that was constructed in 1979 on proposed lot one, along with two agricultural pool buildings and a steel grain bin. Majority of the tract is used for agricultural purposes in the form of grazing and livestock production. Relevant history, by a brief search of the documents recorded within the Recorder's Office of Madison County, Timothy and Glenna Camp purchased parcel A consisting of 15.81 acres on contract from Lynn and Mural Godperson in November of 92 for $85,000. At the same time, Tim and Glenna purchased parcel B consisting of 16.52 acres on contract from the same individuals for $12,391. February 2020, after the passing of Tim Camp, the tract was then transferred to the Glenna Camp Trust. This, there's no, no portion of this plat that is within the FEMA flood zone or the hundred-year flood zone. Staff has determined CSR2 of this tract to be 49.24. The tract is not, or the plat is not within two miles of any incorporated city, therefore, no extra territory or review was completed nor was required. Lots one and two will have their own driveway entrances. Each of these driveways are existing and have been reviewed and approved by the county engineer's office. Permit numbers 25-042 and 25-043. According to the web soil survey rating for this location, septic absorption fields throughout this tract are very limited, as well as dwellings with basements are somewhat very limited based on that web soil survey.
The basements are limited?
Again, it's, it's just based off of soil rating. It's not to say that they can't put basements there, just they involve an overdig and soil compacting test, that kind of stuff. Staff's recommendation for this is to approve the Camp Jones subdivision. Madison County Conference of Plan depicts a future land use of this proposed subdivision as primary agriculture. The general purpose of the land that falls within this future land use is intended to provide for agricultural practice, all agricultural practices in this agricultural first land use district. Agricultural activities should be given primary consideration when conditions prove favorable. This category is where livestock production and feeding operations are allowed and non-farm residential developments are discouraged. It is obvious by review that this family has been, has been and continues to be engaged in farming activities, whether it be livestock or production, or roe production, or roe crop production, as they are involved in both. It's staff's opinion that if the landowner in Madison, if a landowner in Madison County desires to convey a portion of agriculturally zoned land to his direct descendant for that descendant to construct a home, and therefore stay on the farm, they should probably have the right to do so. Staff has given consideration to Madison County zoning ordinance, subdivision regulations, and the conference plan, and determined that what is being proposed aligns with the goals and objectives of each.
This is in Scott two, up on that long gravel road on the St. Charles highway, is it?
I think it's Rustic Avenue.
Okay, okay.
That's the road name.
Alright. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you. So now's the time for the public, if they wish to comment on, sorry. If they wish to comment on this subdivision, this is the public hearing. You have 10 minutes to speak. Go ahead and come up and give your name and your city, and you can say anything you wish regarding the subdivision. Is there anybody on the phone? Please hit star six to unmute your phone if you wish to comment. Alright, hearing none, we'll go ahead. I will entertain a motion to close the public meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The next one we have is Department Head Reports and Discussions. Mike, you are up.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning. My name is Mike Hackett. I'm the Madison County Secretary of Roads Engineer. I've only got three things to give to you today on the agenda. First one is road closure standard procedure. This project's already done. At the last board meeting, I had a couple little items up there that showed some shaving. This is one of those small shaving projects, and it's actually completed now. The other two items are a bridge replacement and a culvert, a bridge replacement with a culvert replacement. This is on the Bennington Park Road. I've got kind of a quick couple pictures, a map here, and then I'll give you some breakdown of the cost. Yeah. That's.
(Inaudible).
Though however, in February, sometimes it feels like that. Oh, yeah. Yeah. Alright. If not, that's, that's fine.
Is it connected?
That's alright. I'll just, I don't want to take a lot of your time. I will tell you that these projects have been in our five-year construction program, and there's times where I've given that long five-year construction program presentation for everybody and talked about times of development of projects. Both these are larger projects, and where they are at today is we're finalizing the plans in this phase. In order to get here, a lot of work has been done, environmental studies, permitting, actual design. We're out at this point where we will approve the plans, and it took about three years to get to this point. And a lot of that's permitting and planning and funding and that kind of stuff.
Are five-year plans required?
By law, yes, correct. Every, they call it the five-year plan, even though there could be things in there for much longer than five years, the name has stuck around for a long time. When there wasn't so much other stuff involved in the project, it was probably possible to get something done in five years. Today, there's a lot of other things with that. Doesn't look like it's going to pop up there. That's fine, no big deal. That's why I always come prepared. So I have title sheets here for these projects. The first one is BOROS 131, and this, both these projects are on Bennington Park Road. This happens to be what we call the middle bridge or overflow bridge. It was originally constructed in 1932. It's kind of seen its life expectancy, and it needs to be replaced. We received some state funding for this project. We applied for this, got it. That will help the project. The rest of the project is going to be backfilled by federal aid bridge replacement money. So, no local money for these, for this project. These qualify for, for these type of events, so that's why we're on that, that's why we have that five-year program.
Most of our bridges are state-owned.
Yes, 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 that's, that's correct. And the reason is, is because it's very hard to pay for a million-dollar project with local money, just almost impossible. This bridge that I'm talking about right now is estimated at 1.5 million for replacement. The other bridge is also on this road, and this is at Bennington Park Road, or Bennington, near the Bennington Park. Same thing, this bridge was also constructed in 1932. It's lived, its lifespan, it happens to be one of our last, one of the last, we still have a few out there, what we call fracture critical trusses. If you watch any of the news, they'll, sometimes when you have these horrific things that happen, bridge collapses and so forth, they'll bring out the word fracture critical. That's just an element in the structure and how it was constructed. So, it's good to get those replaced, very good to get those replaced. This project is one we talked about before, but we actually received congressional funding for this. The county applied for this. They got it. In my lifetime doing all this work, that's, that's hitting the big one. So, that doesn't always happen for structures, so that was a good one to get. That's, at this project, this project is estimated out at 2.2 million. So, but we received 1.5 of congressional money. The rest will be backfilled with federal aid bridge money. So, again, no cost to the local taxpayers, but we're using the system that we need to do to replace the bridges. Again, these are title sheets, bring due to sign. It's required that the county engineers sign their title sheets on the projects and the board supervisors to approve that. The next phase that we need to finish up is right-of-way. We can't do the right-of-way until the plans are done, so that's where we're at. I'm hoping to get this into a December or January Iowa DOT letting, and we have to follow all the procedures to, to get the right-of-way purchased. That's the goal, is to get it into those lettings. I'm also, I'm going to recommend that we tie this project together because it's on the same road instead of, and hopefully help coordinate the time and the detour route that will have to be established. So, it's rounds. I don't have anything else unless you have questions.
This meeting is being recorded. This meeting is being transcribed.
I don't have any questions. You have questions?
I have, I'm in the camera.
That's alright. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yep, you bet.
Alright, so next one is, we have some presentations. We have the folks here from Iowa Behavioral Health Transformation. Ben and Liza, you want to go up, come up and do a presentation? This is the folks that will be assisting us in replacement of CICS.
Thanks for the brochures. Okay, perfect. I couldn't get my PowerPoint to go through either, so sorry. I just need to pull it out and scare. My name is Liza Maxwell. I'm a district leader with the Iowa Primary Care Association. I am fairly new to my role. I just started in July, so I brought Ben Wood who worked with me. He's a consultant with the Iowa PCA. He's been with them since, or he helped them write the bid, so he's been with them since inception and is sticking on through implementation. He has a lot more background and details than I do, so I'm just going to give you a very brief overview, kind of where we started, how things used to be, and how we got to where we are today, and a little bit of future focus. So, many years ago, every county had their own case management department, so there was 99 counties, 99 ways of doing things. In about 2013 or 14, the state decided they wanted the counties to regionalize, so they did, and they formed what was called the mental health disability. So, this is regions, the regions did some really good things. They helped build services, helped get people access to behavioral health care, but there was a lot of inconsistencies. So, the state then wanted to do something different again to try to create more consistencies. So, they put out RFP for what was called the Behavioral Health Administrative Services Organization, BH ASO, or the ASO as people commonly call it, that could help streamline some, some of those services and the administrative work for it. So, the Iowa Primary Care put in a bid, and they did get that contract for the statewide That brings us to July 1st. So, up until June 30, the, the regions were here. CACS covered Madison County, you guys are probably familiar with them. I work with CACS. I truly believe they did some great things, so we're just going to build off of that to go forward. So, on July 1st, there was three focus areas for Iowa Primary Care Association. One was to keep the provider network whole, so we wanted providers to be able to keep providing services, people to keep accessing those services. We didn't want anybody following through there. The second one was to make sure that people knew how to get access to care, or how to get help, know where to go. The bright, shiny front door, I think, is what Iowa HHS commonly refers to it as. So, that's Your Life Iowa. Anybody in the state of Iowa can call Your Life Iowa and get help. They can get connected to a system navigator, so it doesn't matter if you're in Madison County or, you know, rural southwest Iowa, or if you're in the heart of downtown, you can get connected to the system navigator. They'll help walk you through the system. We get lots of calls for connections to mental health services, substance use services. Sometimes it's just trying to find some resources, or maybe they need help getting Medicaid or things like that. The system navigators help them connect to what they need. It's free, so that's another thing that is kind of a step up from the way you, things used to be. There used to be all this red tape and eligibility requirements with system navigation, and there's none of that. Anybody in the state can get help. The regions, there was 11 different mental health and disability services regions. Now there's seven districts. So, like I said, the ASO had, covers all seven districts, and then the disability side of things went to what's called disability access points. So, those individuals are still being served just through a different program. Any, so if, if somebody's looking for those long-term supports and services, that would go to the disability access points, but if they end up calling system navigation through conversation, they realize that they need something a little bit more long-term, a warm handoff is done, so system navigator will help the person call, get, get transferred over, and that happens in all spaces too. If it's like a referral is being made, the warm handoff is made. It's not just, hey, you called the wrong place, give them a phone number, hang up. There, it's, it's never a wrong phone number, it's never a wrong door. We make sure we get people to the right place. And then, another thing, like one of my favorite stories from last week was one of my colleagues did a presentation for a school. The school was really excited to learn about, they can just call system navigation and say, hey, I've got a student here that, you know, needs X, Y, and Z. The system navigator, they can hang up the phone then. The system navigator can do all the research, make phone calls, you know, get online, do whatever they need to do, find what they need, and then call the school back, the counselor or the teacher, and say, hey, this is what, this is what's available. The school was really excited about that because they could then focus their time on the students rather than spending their time doing all that research. So, lots of good stuff there. Oh, I think I forgot, sorry. I lost my train of thought. The, the third focus, there was, one, the provider network call, two, system navigation, and then the third thing was paying provider, so also a pretty big deal. And all those funds are coming from the state, so that's, those are not coming funds anymore.
So, Liza, if they don't have any money, it's okay?
Absolutely. They can call. You know, the, as far as like, this, it's accessing the service, so it's getting them connected to those services. The, the funding is a little different deal, and Ben can probably speak a little better to that. You know, their insurance will still cover some of those services, behavioral health services. If they're underinsured, the providers can build the, what's called the SNMIS through the state, so HHS will be paying some of those claims. Iowa PCA is for, is funding access and sustainability.
It's a, it's a population-based intervention, so anybody that has behavioral health needs can call, and those, those navigators will help folks to figure out what is the funding source that you have, right? Because we all have a blended different, you know, group of funding sources, whether that might be a private insurer, whether that, somebody may be on Medicaid, et cetera. Our role is to get folks who have those behavioral health needs to the right space, right? And make sure that we connect them warmly into that system, because a lot of times what we find is if folks get a phone number, they call, somebody that they, they talk to doesn't understand, we do that interaction so that we get that person embedded into that system before we let go. And that, we, we found that that was a really big gap in the system, and so we're extremely excited to be able to do that.
Yeah, absolutely. And system navigators are all across the state. So, the Iowa PCA is trying to get representation from every county in the state, which I think is really cool. Here in Madison County, we have a lead behavioral health navigator, and then I'm actually also a Madison County resident, I live in Furo. So, the system navigators are, are in the communities. Right now, they're working from home, but we are looking for opportunities for them to get out and be able to meet with people in person, which I think will be great. Do you have any questions? I feel like I went through that super quick.
Can we share, like, the phone number, website, what are the, the resources for people?
Yes, absolutely. I have some flyers, I can leave a few flyers for you. I can also email them, so you have some tangible thing to have, but anybody can call Your Life Iowa. The phone number there is 855-581-8111. And so, like I said, anybody in the state of Iowa can call, whether it's an individual asking for yourself, if you're looking for maybe another community member, or like law enforcement can call, or the schools can call and, and get some of those resources.
I'll get that up on our website, too.
That'd be great, yeah.
Yep. Thank you, so.
Thank you very much. We really liked your role for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright, we have Ryan, you are up.
It's only been two weeks since we were last in, so it's not quite as, we've got quite as much as we've all heard before on, but just looking at our loan loan, we're sitting at $47,000 there, we've got seven active loans. We had a few possible loans, one of them was able to find financing in Earlone for the entirety of the project, the size of the project, and we've got one in particular that we're watching, still building renovation after the building is purchased by a couple of some businesses. We hope that goes well, and we are ready to support them as soon as they close, which is a month off to approximately. On the Madison County development ground, that's 22 acres, the long skating strip between the Upana and the highway to the north, we did get that appraisal back. We are continuing to have discussions with the local business and are cultivating some other outside of the area possibilities on that parcel. We are working with the University of Northern Iowa Institute of Decision Making to try to put together a proposal to do a strategic plan for the organization. We haven't had one of those on the books, as far as I can tell, ever, so we'd like to get that cleaned up and provide some authorization for the org and to help out with the county and the others in the maintenance balance. Other possible financing that we're assisting with, we're working with a internet provider to do with some equipment concerns. We are also working with the rural business. On the site side of things, we continue to work with two businesses in Winterset on two different timetables, and we are working with a, going back and working with the commercial site in Earlone to try to do some updating on that, and so that's all in the churn. We are also now working with a commercial building in the eastern part of the county, trying to find any, any Bennington or Patterson option for that, but that's a small warehouse, probably $30,000 in property tax, right, from that alone, if you can land that, trying not to lose it to Moore County.
Are there any business, big buildings in Patterson or there?
Not, not available. No, they'd have to build.
They have old, old.
Yeah, so we need to, that's why it's.
Get it on our.
Yeah, I'm trying. That's the, I'm trying to get that on our side of the line, so. We're working in Earlone, we continue to have some, quite a few discussions about residential commercial expansion in town. The fiber build-out study should, is, is nearly complete, and they should report back to council soon. We are, we could go through the city Winterset and identify 41 possible sites or infill housing for splitable lots or open lots that could be developed in the house, so we're hopefully meeting with a builder here soon, a new builder, to look at those sites and move forward and potentially find, identify which ones are easiest to move forward with. We continue to monitor a large business expansion in the area, and we, I spent a couple days at the Iowa Downtown Conference in Muskegon earlier in the month. Then on the community foundation side, I think, we did open the disaster fund to deal with the Winterset flooding, the flash flooding concerns there, and so we did have some donations, and so we are pulling together a committee to meet and figure out how we can maybe do some direct assistance there. Want to move that along?
Thank you, Ryan.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Alright, we've come to the time of our public comments. Go ahead and open for public comment. Those on the phone, if you wouldn't mind being patient, we'll come to you after folks here speak. And then if you, it is time for speaker, remember to hit star six to unmute your phone when we're ready to get to you. Folks here, if you wish to speak, you can come to the microphone, please, state your name and your town. You have three minutes to speak.
Michelle, before, I would like permission to allow the two gentlemen we met with yesterday to speak for just a few minutes, so they don't have to stay.
Yo, go ahead, Michelle, go ahead.
Oh, I didn't want, I just wanted permission so they.
That's fine.
So they don't have to stay.
So we can understand their, their, so what's.
So you can understand.
Okay, that's great.
Michelle Grant, 1341 150th Street, Earl, Iowa. I wanted to speak today on the auditor's resolution for the payroll. Oh, I didn't want, I just wanted permission, so they.
That's fine.
So they don't have to stay.
So we can understand their, their, yes, and what's.
So you can understand.
Okay, that's great.
Michelle Grant, thirteen forty-one, one hundred fiftieth street, Irland, Iowa. I wanted to speak today on the auditor's resolution for the payroll outsourcing. Just a couple comments, because I know we can't interact, but perhaps these will spark a little discussion before you through this resolution. First of all, I didn't see anywhere there was other bids got, uh, sought for this proposal. For instance, Paylocity, ADP, I think even True North has a payroll option. So that's the first item, and then the other one, uh, yeah, this is the one from July ninth, uh, from RT Vision. In the evaluation, it reads, once approved, the date would seamlessly move to payroll processes. Where the auditor's office would finalize the process and payroll would be complete. So, because this cost benefit analysis includes savings for the staff of eighty-five, twelve, forty annually. I'm wondering, because the auditor's office still has to touch this process, how many hours that's going to involve every two weeks? Was that part of your analysis as well? So if you could talk about that, that'd be great, and... Lastly, just to know that we're going to outweigh fifteen thousand five hundred dollars. I don't remember that being a part of the budget conversations. So hopefully that is funded, and while on paper it says we're going to save seven thousand dollars. Or no, excuse me, we'll still be in the net of spending an additional seven thousand dollars, um, this first year. So, those are the things I'm most curious about, thank you, Dees.
All right, who else would like to speak?
Go ahead, I'll quit. I just have a fact for you guys, it's a long, I'll do reference in what I do there.
Steve Pierce, I'm the director with Madison County Conservation Board, um, as the board supervisors knows. As part of the financial package and planning for the new conservation center, um, we do have to sell our old headquarters office and the surrounding land beside that. So I was instructed, I met with the county attorney to go through the process of selling private property. Sat a sit-down meeting with him, I was instructed to go out and get three bids, um, from three different companies, three proposals. So I did that, and I started working with Diane, so potentially selling the public health building. So we've been working together on these two different projects. So I did receive three proposals, we reviewed the proposals, and those are included in, in your yellow folder. We eliminated one of the proposals, uh, just because of the terms of the proposal. So that narrowed us down to two, um, we received one from Dream Dirt, which is represented by Jason Smith. If you guys look in your folder, that's going to be on the left-hand, um, pocket. And then we also have one from Midwest Land Management, which is Tom Bradley, and, uh, that'll be on their right-hand side of your pocket. So included in that folder is going to be the actual proposal, and then also the actual contract. I've highlighted some of the information in, in both that are pertinent to the sales of the properties. So within that, then, uh, Diane, myself, and each representative from those two companies had an onsite review yesterday. So we looked at the properties, had some continuous discussions on that, and that leads us to today. Eventually, we have to sign a contract with one of these companies, so we did invite them to come to the board supervisors meeting today to give a, uh, to talk about their proposals that they would like, and they would see that, um, we have some representatives here today, so we'll talk their public comments off. But that's where we're at for selling of, of properties right now, and I know it's on the agenda for, uh, new business, so we can further the discussion at that point, so.
Thank you. Gentlemen, Tom. Oh, does it matter, Bill, we'll go alphabetically both.
Sounds good. Hello ladies and gentlemen, my name is Tom Bradley, I am an auctioneer and, uh, real estate agent with Midwest Land Management. I've been an auctioneer for the past fifteen years, uh, resided here in the Madison County area. Uh, conducted a lot of auctions and real estate auctions under a different company, uh, that I ingrained in this area. You know, it's, it's funny to, to hear you open in prayer, that was something pretty cool, I've been down a spiritual deal, and God's very much in this room today, working, uh, very much so. And, uh, I guess, between myself and my competitor, my competitor was my mentor, he mentored me, I'm up against some of the best. I'm a local resident to the area, I've put two kids through the, the, the school district here, I dropped a child off this morning. I'm a member of the Madison County Pork Producers, which I help do auctions there with, uh, very ingrained in Randy and the county. Lived here since two thousand and one, I believe, uh, until I just recently moved to help take care of my father. As far as the properties, visited them both yesterday, very desirable properties, I know one thing that's been a concern, there's reserves on them. Uh, we can definitely do reserves, uh, like I've talked to Diane about reserves. Reserves are not an asking price, a reserve is a point of protection to, to prevent a catastrophe. Uh, so that's, that's the only thing I've kind of stressed to her, talking to her and setting the reserves. Proposed doing an open house, bringing the community people, you know, I, I know the people can deal, you know, uh, do an open house on them. Do them same day, staggered time. Just two very nice, desirable properties that, that I would love the opportunity to represent my county and, and sell them highest price, and I'd like to do whatever it takes to work for you.
Good job, Tom.
I'm Jason Smith, and I'm the real estate broker for Dream Dirt. We've done business around here for a long time, uh, I think going on fifteen years now, it's amazing how fast time passes. But I appreciated the opportunity to meet with Steve and Diane yesterday and have some telephone conversations with them. I worked for the government for twenty, the first twenty-two years of my adult life, so I sort of understand this process. And how a county or government entity disposes of property. When you look at Iowa Code three thirty-one point three sixty-one, it obviously lays out how the county property has to be disposed of, you've got all these rules. I fully understand all of those things in the process of creating a resolution that happened in your public hearings. And then eventually, something that's going to become important in the process of conducting an auction is how the price eventually is approved. Tom talked about having a reserve on an auction, and certainly, a reserve is very appropriate, because you have to protect the county's interest. And in this case, I believe the reserve's going to be asking price, it's going to be your appraisal price. You can't, the county is in no place to take a risk below that, if you understand what I'm saying. I mean, this, by three thirty-one, three sixty-one, you have a price, and that's what your price is, that's the county's interest. We want to protect the citizens of Madison County with that protection, because there's always the option for plan B, move beyond the auction if you don't reach the appraised value of the property. So, I think in a process where you, as a county, have a responsibility to achieve the maximum value, not only in the sale, but beyond the sale. Your job in protecting the citizens means that you want to take these properties, put them back on the tax roll, and have them being productive properties to the county. Because that's how we eventually grow the system. So I've looked at both of the properties, uh, obviously, the conservation, the environment out there is amazing. That property has potential, either as a vacation rental, a shop, or another producing business that can contribute to all of the people in Madison County. But up on that, the Veterans Affairs property, you have sort of a different situation than that. You have a really nice, big, in-town lot, right, and lots are at a premium now. You might study the idea of how big that lot is, and whether it's best to sell it all as one, or sell it as two. But one trend that's happening in those types of buildings, where you have a brick and mortar business, sort of decline that's moved to the internet. But where you find the, uh, sort of the need for that type of stuff, is this idea that's had been coming along of mini offices. That building is set up perfectly for somebody here, an investor, or, you know, somebody that wants to own something that's going to become income-producing, to create these mini offices in there. I think, and Ryan gave his presentation earlier, I think working with Ryan, if you have an auction company that can work with your current existing resources, your economic directors and stuff like that. To go and look for these different needs and then advertise to that, so that you're maximizing what you're getting out of it. And not only maximizing what you're getting, not necessarily in price, but for the future of those properties. That would be our marching orders, if you should hire us, and we have the honor to represent you in the county, and I would appreciate that, so thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, is there anyone else that wishes to speak, please come on up, state your name and your town, otherwise, we will move to the folks on the phone. Anybody? All right, so if anyone on the phone wished to comment, please remember to hit star six to unmute yourself, and state your name and your town, and you can go ahead and speak. All right, uh, it sounds like we don't have any folks that wish to speak, uh, going forward, we'll go on and move to resolutions for board consideration. Uh, the first one is approving the new payroll software solutions, costing fifteen-five on year one, um, so... Uh, Michelle made some good points earlier, uh, however, there's a lot of things that the public doesn't know. For instance, there's only two companies that counties can use for our payroll software system that interacts with our taxes and our accounting software. And that's Tyler Solutions, we have no choice, there's no bidding process, it's either one or the other. Unfortunately, because of that, we're kind of limited on what we can choose for payroll software enhancement. RT Vision is, is one of those, our ADP cannot do it, other standard private business payroll software solutions cannot interact with this proprietary software from Solutions or Tyler. So we're kind of limited on that. As for the cost, based on what I was reading, and ladies, um, tell me if you understood the same too, is, the idea is to eventually eliminate the, because the, one of the part-time positions. That is currently being held by our temp, that, that doesn't work that many hours. So what's budgeted in that position right now is about, with IFRS, uh, with IFRS and the, the actual salary, it's about a little over thirty thousand dollars a year. So, if we can eliminate that position based on these numbers, um, that would save the taxpayers money. So, based on what I'm reading, what he said on his ROI, is that he wants to wait to hire a full-time person, because this temp worker is, I think she got a new job, she starts in September, I'm not sure. But anyway, is to hold off backfilling that to see how this works, but the idea is that we won't backfill it at all. But that three months of not paying somebody will save the cost of pay for this. That's how I read it, I don't know if you guys read it the same way.
Yes, and also, in, you know, increasing our accuracy, um, because we won't have the redundancy of.
The manual.
Entry, yeah, the manual entry for the payroll system, it should increase the accuracy, it should be faster. And it also should also help us with evaluating things like overtime and, and things of that nature, but.
I'd like to automate more things and not do so much manual work, because that's where we get mistakes. And then they have to do more manual work to go back in and correct mistakes, um, based on the software, I, I've looked into this software. Basically, it makes it easier for not only the auditor's office, but the department heads. You can input it once, and then it's just a, a click, and then it flows through, it's very similar to some of the private.
But there's still oversight and a check.
A check by the department heads, yeah. Can we discuss this with the department heads first, sit down and have a discussion, because Mike's payroll is done by keys. This has nothing to do with Mike, Mike's separate from this. Is this completely separate? Do you discuss this with the department heads to see if they think this would work? Right, well, it's not something that, they would basically have to be trained to learn the new automation, if they, the manual process would completely go. So, and I know that, um, there has been mistakes made on payroll that is problem, and I want to eliminate that human error if we can by automating it. And if we can eliminate a position, say, that would be good too, um, and it's not currently, it's currently being filled by a temp, so it's not like we're going to be laying anybody off, it's just not a backfill. So, um, I know Boone County does this, I did talk to the auditor in Boone County, they love it, um, so... I don't know, I mean, it looks to me like the ROI is there. What are your thoughts on that, or your guys' thoughts on that?
Yeah.
I think it's premature until after this election, I mean, you don't know, maybe a new person, whoever wins. Well, I'd like to save money now. Well, it's kind of premature, I mean, you're implementing something.
We could potentially table it and talk about it Tuesday.
I would be for tabling, putting it off until.
Okay, it's a few days, we can talk about it, and our, we're going to do a special meeting Tuesday, can we add it to that?
I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't add it to a special meeting, I think that, I would add it to, you can kick it, the candle. I, I don't want to kick the candle any longer, I mean, we, I would like to start, especially since we know that the temp person is not going to be here in September. So I would like to be able to have this started, because it's going to take six months to implement, it's not going to be a quick thing. So somebody's quitting in that office? The, the temp worker is, has found a new job. The one that was doing payroll? Well, she was helping with payroll, but she hasn't. She hasn't been here for long. She only works a few hours in the town, it's not even a full twenty hours. She was working her month. So, um, so anyway, I mean, I'm fine tabling it and, and, and waiting, um, but, uh, whomever is auditor, I'd like to see this. Because if we can eliminate a position, and we can save money and automate and do everything automatically, rather than manual data entry, not once, but twice. I mean, that just increases the chance of error.
I, I support it, but I, but I'm okay waiting until the results of the election.
Okay, all right, so, uh, we'll go ahead and table that, um, until, uh, the special meeting on the second. So would you add it to that meeting number to have it tabbed? I don't think you should do it on the second, I mean, when you, special meetings and you put things with a lot of money expenditures, it seems like you're slipping it through. We're talking about it right now. I don't know, I don't have all these special meetings, if you want a meeting every week, have a meeting every week.
Well, I proposed that early on, Diane, and you resisted greatly to that.
Meeting every week?
Yeah, she did.
No, we just always have meeting every week.
No, she proposed it.
I tried getting that changed, when we were working through. I would go through meetings, oh, not night meetings though.
No.
And not for night meetings. All right, so we agreed to. So if we're meeting again on Tuesday, anyway, that's my point, because why can't we discuss it on Tuesday? Yeah, let's just discuss it on Tuesday, I'm okay tabling it, but let's just put it on the agenda for Tuesday. All right. Okay, uh, moving on to the next resolution, approving to hire of Kate Rice Stanner, Assistant County Attorney for ninety-four thousand per year. And promoting, uh, S. Iverson to Assistant County Attorney for ninety-four thousand, effective September eighth. Do I have a motion, uh, Steve, did you want to say anything about that?
Um, well, we're pretty, I think we're pretty fortunate to get a chance to get Mr. Rice Stanner, he's got, he's an Army vet, uh, and he's got five years' experience as a, he's come to Assistant County Attorney down in Waukaboe County. And with this, then we're also going to be moving Sierra into a different position, um, so then we organize the office a little bit. We lost, um, recently lost Jamie, she left, uh, so the money issue is, we're taking ten thousand off of what Jamie was making and putting it on what Sierra was making, so it all falls into, within our budget and everything like that, so.
Okay. Okay. And Sierra will be on the Trinity paper.
She, oh, she's, yeah, well, yeah, so. It would be really, really helpful to have somebody in there before that happens, but that's not, yeah.
Okay. So, um, I'll entertain a motion to approve, so, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, all right, approving road closure for road maintenance on our twentieth street, effective August eleventh, which is, of course, is already in the process. Do I have a motion to approve? It's done, I think, yeah. So it's done, okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All, any discussion, all in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, um, I would inter, if you guys are okay, approving, um... I would, if you guys are okay, approving the next two resolutions together, B and C for the final plans for the project. Is it okay if we do that or do you need it?
It's fine.
Okay.
We have separate resolutions for it.
If you want them separate, we can...
I didn't know what they required, so.
It'll be fine if you can approve them together because they're the same type of projects. We have separate resolutions, so it will be fine. Conditions will be met, either way.
Do you, do I, you guys are okay with that or do you want to do some?
Some will be approved.
Alright, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, approving SR zero eight two six two five B and two five C. Please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, approving agreement, units of faith for continued ACH transactions per ODBFI originator agreement. This is out of the treasurer's office. Do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next one is applications for licenses, permits and cancellations. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I went to the next page. Alright, do I have a motion to approve, approving the plot of Camp Jones Subdivision? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Alright, we're going down now to licenses, permits and cancellations. The first one is to approve a liquor license for Aaron Obit at Cover Bridge Festival in this coming October. Do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Alright, next one is the opportunities to use Mass County grounds for the Mass County Bible reading marathon from September eighth through twelve. Joan, thank you for doing that again this year. I appreciate it. Do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next one is motion approving application for fireworks display for James Kaczynski in Earlham from September twentieth to twenty-fifth. Those are possible rainy days, so that's why there's a range. Do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We are now into other business. First one is board member reports. Which one do you like to go first?
Well, well, safety committee is progressing. We're getting movement and setting up, you know, different safety training options for, for employees and, you know, the intention, of course, is to reduce our workmates' comp claims so that we can hopefully all work more safely and cost the county less. So, that's moving right along. The decategorization board met last week. There are some changes. Now, now that entity works with the underprivileged and helps line them up with resources, works with several different entities. And so, earlier when we had this, the presentation from Iowa Behavioral Health, it all kind of ties in. The funding is going to be changing and so there are concerns up to twenty twenty-seven and what that looks like with the CPPC, Community Partnership for Protecting Children, and how some of the funding changes are going to look. So, just something to be mindful of, but there are a tremendous amount of resources out there for folks. They're doing a great job trying to get that message out and fill any gaps in services.
Is that something you should put on our website?
I, I think so.
Do they have anything that's, that can be easily digestible where we can just throw it up there or?
There's a lot of unknowns as, as far as, you know, for now, you know, this budget fiscal year, we're okay.
Okay.
And it's all funded. They, they hit their budget to the penny.
Okay.
So, that's okay for now. This is just future forward thinking. There's a lot of unknowns with regarding restructuring with the state and what these programs look like. So, there'll be more to come with that. Also, I think we're going to be talking about the public health building, but I know we also want to talk about the tax statements and the status of those. I know Matt has found some concerns.
Yeah, he, there's a couple. There's, I think it was like three thousand properties that were not getting credits and they haven't been for several years. So, he's working on that. That's probably going to take us beyond this, because I think it's several thousand properties. And the other one is there, when we did parcel splits, the history was not transferred over so that new parcel is not being evaluated, which means it won't be taxed. So, he has to fix that because whatever happened, they never got, when they split it, it never got transferred over. So, I know Sean has been working really closely with them to help fix that. That has to be fixed before it can, we can do anything. So, a lot of the delay is because he's finding these errors and because he likes having things accurate, he's trying to fix those. But some of this stuff was kicked down the road from previous years and unfortunately, it's probably, he's going to do what he can to, my understanding, we should double check with him, is he's going to do what he can to make sure that what we need to do to get taxes, the minimum amount is done, but there's all these other things that will need to be fixed so these errors don't keep coming up every year and then pushed aside. So, I mean, two dollars, twenty dollars, it doesn't sound like a lot, but it's still not money we should be getting. So, hopefully that will be resolved.
Can I just say, can I just say something really quick?
Yeah.
I just, I think it's very important also with that, that we also tell our residents on Madison County that with that, that the longer that it takes, I understand there's, there's issues or whatever it is, Matt also has to then give it back to me, myself, the charter, and then I have to give it back to Matt. So, there's a few more steps to this process.
Right.
Just because he's done with that, doesn't mean that it's...
You still have stuff you have to do because you guys are very symbiotic. You have to work together.
Right. So, then on that final step, once the auditor says, okay, taxes are ready to go. So, if I say that that doesn't happen until September fifteenth, it is, it is then that it is from that day forward, is when the thirty days starts. So, a lot of people think that taxes are, start no matter what on September first.
Right.
And that's not the case. Hopefully, I mean...
So, people are going to be paying, I think that's important to say, because if people know that, either they want to rush and pay it by October first or they're going to be fined.
We adjust the deadline and the deadline is adjusted, I guess, kind of per the auditor when that gets done. So, I just, we have been getting a lot of phone calls and a lot of angry people. So, I just, I would like other people to know and if you could spread that education, that would be fantastic.
Okay. I think the auditor's office is always also beginning anger calls.
Oh, I'm sure. Yes.
So, can we have a, somebody do a summary update that we can share and put on our webpages and stuff that maybe reassure people? They're not going to have this tax bill due the day they receive it.
Yeah, I think maybe after the election, would you be willing to work with Matt and to put something together so people know that... So, I think information is, is good that people know because I've had people ask the same question. I mean, I haven't got my tax statement yet and I'm going to say, okay, I'm going to get it. It's thirty days from that.
Right.
So, but thank you for that clarification.
I'm just glad it'll be accurate. I want it to be accurate.
Well, it'll make it easier for future tax things rather than, you know, it just, yeah. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, you know what? I kind of digress, but then we'll talk about the public health building sale. I just want to make sure I'm doing everything I can to help with that, so let's talk about that when we get there.
Okay. Diane?
I met with the auctioneer, Steve and I, yesterday and we've, Steve's building needs, he has the loan due, but he can push that back. He has to, but they know, they both realize that should be sold sooner. They both looked at Public Health Building and that isn't moved out yet, so they are willing to wait. But sell them both, so that worked out really well for us at a much cheaper price. I met with, oh, I had to meet with the BMW. They have my picture in front of the AED, which I hate. I hate having my picture taken, but they look great in their own corners. I met with the City Winter Set. We put up our generator and we did not sign an electrical permit, which is our building, but it is under their jurisdiction. So, I did go over and meet with them and they reworked all costs. So, thank you for the City Winter Set, but I did get that fixed.
Alright, so, I met with the Iowa Workforce Development Board, talking about future, especially since some funding is going to be cut on the federal side, so they're going to work through that. I have a mature meeting tonight. I met multiple times with auditor regarding the tax issue. I also had a couple of calls from concerned residents outside of Earlham. Apparently, on the Dallas County side, northwest of Earlham where that railroad tracksure is, is there's a new facility that's going to be grinding turbine blades. They've already placed blades out there already.
Where is it?
Right by Earlham. Off Pittsir. We're there on the border of Earlham and Dallas. So, I've gotten calls from farmers and ranchers in the area obviously concerned about the dust and potential contamination of groundwater. It isn't open. I'm being told it's grinding openly. I'm not sure if that's true or not, but the blades are, cut-up blades and stuff is already out there and open. You can see it. I reached out to the DNR because the one farmer I talked to said when he called the DNR and asked for information, he was basically told, get a lawyer. They have a permit and they hung up on him. I don't know if that's true or not. The folks with the DNR I talked to, they were a little surprised at that, but they are going to get us copies of all the permits that were granted on that site, find out exactly what it is so I can read exactly what it's about. And I also talked to one of the county supervisors in Dallas County who was completely unaware of this. They had no idea. And the zoning department, they had no idea.
Of course not. It's fiberglass.
Yeah, so, the residents on turbine blades are toxic. And they, and they also, too, I also talked, when I talked to supervisor, I warned them about the issue with their landfill. So, I told them what we did regarding our ordinance and how we prohibited any kind of turbine refuges in their landfill, in our landfill. So, she was going to research it, find out. I read their Dallas County ordinance. I did get confirmation that the site is zoned industrial, which gives them a little bit more freedom, probably because it's a long-term railroad tracksure. However, in their ordinance, unless they changed it and the current one isn't up on the website, your own, it's permissive, so in other words, you're allowed to do certain things, but if it's not on the list of allowances, you can't do it. Well, turbine blade recycling, obviously, is not on the list because that ordinance is probably written in nineteen sixty-five. So, so I've reached out to them and so that's where we're at right now. So, because it, even though it's on the Dallas County side, it's going to affect residents on our side. So, this is something I think we need to maybe as a board be aware of and should, be concerned about that.
We could put that in our ordinances.
We can't put anything in our ordinances to Dallas County.
Oh, I mean, to protect ours. Well, yeah, it's still...
It's still Dallas County.
Yeah.
So, our ordinance are protective. Maybe you cannot store, you cannot recycle, you cannot use landfill. There's nothing on our side, but there's not a lot we can do on the Dallas. We had, we covered this the last time they tried to do it in Earlham, northeastern city. And they were able to get, they eventually got the blades removed off of that, I think because of the public eye and the surrounding homes. Obviously, this is closer to farms, so there's not as many homes, but it could affect livestock, it could affect crop, depending on what eventually gets in the air over there. So...
When we wrote the policy for the landfill, we named every pop, nut and screw of those turbines because they're just not, they don't decompose.
Since you sit on the board, would you mind reaching out to the landfill in Dallas County and letting them know?
About what we did?
What you guys did and maybe send them the documentation and recommendation? Because if they bring their, because they can't bring the parts to us because they're on the Dallas County side, which means any kind of refuges they have leftover that can't be recycled, they are going to send to the Dallas County landfill.
And if they bring them to us, then I think we could prosecute them because we just spent two point two million dollars on a new cell and we can't have that stuff in there.
So, if you would reach out as senior on the board to a fellow board member of the Dallas County landfill, let them know what's going on so they can start putting policies in place to protect themselves, that would be great.
So, this is on their side off of Pittsir Road?
Yeah, it's right there by the railroad tracksure. So, there, if you, once you go over the railroad tracksure on Pittsir, it's on the west side there and that's Dallas.
And they're grinding the blades there.
I don't, I'm told they're starting grinding. When I looked, I didn't see it.
You probably better go figure that out.
But the blades are already there. They're already dismantled, they're cut up, there's refuge, there's shards, there's already stuff going on. So, the, the DNR said that they went out there and looked and they said they were compliant, but I don't know what they're compliant with, so that's why I asked for a copy of it. Either way, we have residents in our county that are very deeply concerned about, one of the residents, the wife has some bonural and some other medical issues. This, he's concerned about it affecting her, so...
What are they going to do if it gets really windy? Are they just putting them in a pile or are they contained in the building?
I have no idea. Right now, they're not contained in the building. They're out in the open. Everything's out in the open. If you drive by there right now, you'll see it. So, anyway, just wanted to make you guys aware of that, that might be something I'll have more information about later, but wanted to give you a heads up. Diane, if you can talk to that landfill, that would be great. Give my heads up on that. Okay, so that is all I have. You already, we already talked about the tax statements, so that was another thing I had. So, if you guys have nothing else, we'll go ahead and move on to our business. Public Health Building, VA Building Sale. Put this on here so we can discuss it. So, we're going to approve getting an appraisal and we're going to approve an auctioneer. So, the next step, I've already let the board health chair know, so I'm assuming they're going to talk about it in their September meeting, that this is probably going to move forward and they need to figure out what they need regarding the space. I know you talked a little bit regarding space and needs and that kind of stuff so we can get the timing right for the sale of the building and move.
So, are you thinking sell the building first and then move?
No, move them first.
And that's what I was, that's what I was...
The auctioneers need to know, is the shelving staying? I think we need to give all the departments, a lot of the departments have want some of the things out there.
So, I think maybe now what we should do is start directing them to start getting rid of stuff.
She's welcome, but I think the other departments have mentioned, somebody wanted a chair. There are better desks out there. And if Susan says it can go, we need to give it to us first, to in-house. There's a table that they don't use that I think the landfill could use.
Well, Susan, you're moving stuff to a certain holding area, a certain office, right, that you don't want? That's not playing for extra stuff, right? So, once we know, we have kind of everything consolidated, then we can send a communication out.
Yeah, so other staff needs some of it.
Yeah.
And then what we don't get, need, what we don't take, or if the landfill doesn't need it for their office or other offices, we will, we could have another auctioneer watch that.
So, when do we want to start moving them into courthouse?
Well, that's... Well, it's going to be depending on, you know, we're going to have general construction to build a wall. I don't think I've heard what the size requirements are for those wall offices. I think that was undetermined when we last met.
So, is who, who would determine that?
I was, I thought I had to note that we weren't getting any information, who, Public Health?
Public Health.
Uh-huh.
I'll, they, I was hoping they'd have, I didn't realize they'd have a meeting this morning, so.
Okay.
They have a meeting in September.
Okay.
So, what we can do, Susan, if you would mind putting that up, your guys' agenda, that'll just come to your meeting and we can talk about what they need for sizes, requirements and that type of stuff and maybe...
The only size requirement I think that they're meeting is the one that was for what DHS requires for their office space.
Right, and I have that.
And I want to say a hundred square feet is what they have currently right now.
Okay. They basically told me they just need a desk, a printer. They don't even need a phone.
Yeah. So, the walls that she was talking about needing built is to be closed that, but it's actually going to be two walls because it needs split between the DHS office and what will be our Public Health Nurse Office where our records will be stored.
And the DHS, DHS though, they're only here once a week, right? If that?
It truly depends upon the day. She said that being moved to the courthouse, they'll probably use it more frequently.
Okay.
Because they're there for court and all of that. Because they're there for court and all of that, so.
Now, they did tell me when I talked to them, is that they have an ICN node at that building that they need to be moved. Because they, they can't, they, they said they think they have to be on the ICN network rather than the county network. So that's another coordination we'll have to do, is to make sure we get the node moved out there.
I have that on my list.
So they were, basically they're waiting kind of for us to kind of circle back with them on a timeframe of when they can go out there. So I think what we'll probably need to do is do the construction first, get all the offices set up, get the, the node moved out there, and then move everyone.
And they will know that because they haven't moved, obviously. That was an interesting suggestion to split off that back.
Well, I don't know if that would work because the lot is behind, it's behind the building.
I don't know, it's just a thought.
Whoever buys the property can figure that out.
So my question is, I, you know, I can start getting some contractors lined up to get some beds for this general construction. My question is, do you, I mean, I caught a handful of people, I've talked to Chip and others, and of course I prefer to use local, if at all possible. Do you, either of you have any preferences or recommendations on that? Or just get, get some top three that are reputable and start getting them out here to get some-
I think just, at your discretion, I'm fine with that.
You might reach the one who remodeled it the first time, that office.
Who was that is?
That was Joel Visser, yeah, he's out of Earlham.
He did, he did, you might ask him, yeah, because he did it, so he's very familiar.
Because we're gonna what, that, we're gonna split that into what, two or three offices?
Two.
Two.
Two, yeah, there's, there's currently-
There's one in there, there's the back vault office.
That open area now, we need a wall.
I know, just split it in half.
And split it in half for two private offices.
Are they gonna do one as you walk in along the side?
No, that'll be Susan's desk. There, which we understood-
Where it used to be Susan, your desk will be where it is.
Oh, great, that's great.
Yeah, because that big desk is staying, right Susan, yeah, so.
Where will Thaddeus go?
Thaddeus is going in the vault, in a opinion, with someone that needs ADA requirements. He's gonna come out into the office right in front of his to work.
So he gets all the windows, yeah, because they want, they need all the windows.
So we're, we're also, my concerns are with the heating and cooling and what we're going to do now that the wall and those offices off, there's no ductwork anymore. So we're gonna have to get, get some expert advice on that. Chip was gonna reach out with Excel, who does a lot of work with us anyway. But we need to definitely pursue that and see what makes the most sense in that regard, if it's many splits or not.
Or we just do transoms above the door to allow airflow.
To let air go through, but then it's not private.
But then it's not private for HIPAA.
And we can't do that.
Well, could they close it just for that meeting?
No, those are high up.
No, the transoms, you have a-
Are they even open?
No, this would be the new ones. That'd be the new one, because her concerns with when we put the new walls up, it's gonna make those, those offices not have airflow, which is a good point. But to Susan's point, you know, if we have transom, it's not gonna be private, but the transom could be closed for a meeting. So we can look into both. That means probably throw ductwork up there, to drop ceiling.
Room temperatures for our fridge and freezer, they have, the room temperatures have to remain between seventy-two and seventy-five, I believe, at all times in order for the fridge and freezer to run appropriately.
But we probably wouldn't put them in all those offices though, right?
No, being in the clinic or next to the-
Okay, okay, okay. So more discussion on that.
I got enough to at least keep, keep it moving and get some thoughts. Yeah, I definitely think we need to get them moved first, make sure that the space is out, put through your needs.
Do we know about, we had approximately, if you were wanting us?
I'm sorry, Susan, I couldn't hear you.
Is it approximately a date and time, so that I can get my-
We're not gonna know until we, we get all the contractors lined up, we know their availability and timelines. It's, we got a lot to do to get that.
Thirty, sixty days out?
At least, probably more.
Okay, hopefully, do you think, when's your meeting in September?
It is on the third, it's the first Wednesday.
First Wednesday, okay.
That's Wednesday.
Okay, so I can do an update to the board on what you're doing. And then you can reach out to the board chair as with updates, she'll probably wanna know. Okay, all right, anything else on that? Any other discussion on that? Okay, all moving on to new business, discuss Dream Dirt auction of the public health and conservation building.
We are, we're a little confused on that, but anyway, I, I would recommend, since Steve and I have been working so closely with both of these, that he has a board and they're both great. And what they recommend, we just go with. His conservation, they're both fine, they're both down to the same point level. And whatever you're moving on.
Just some highlights, so you guys, obviously you take the contracts back, the county attorneys reviewed the contracts during our conversations yesterday, there was no additional comments on the contracts. But as you got, and these are just some highlighted points. Midwest Land Management, their proposal stated four percent. He's knocked it down to, the contract was three percent in the contract. And verbally yesterday during discussions, he said he would go down to two and a half percent. And that's basically because-
And this is Midwest?
This is Midwest Land, you can, yeah, write those down, Tom and Barry. So Jason Smith with Dream Dirt and his proposal and in his contract, it's at three and a half percent. He said if he got both buildings, he would go down to two and a half percent. That's the reason why Midwest got wind of that, so they've marked theirs down to two and a half percent. The only really big difference that I see, and I, again, you guys review through the contract, you guys are gonna be the one that's signing it. If there's, with Dream Dirt, if there's no sale, there's no additional fees. They take care of all the advertising, they pay for all the expensive ad. No sale, no additional fees. With Midwest Land Management, they are taking care of three thousand dollars of advertising. If there's a no sale, the seller is responsible for paying that back.
And their, Dream Dirt had nothing upfront costs?
No, there's no additional fees, it's just a flat percentage rate of the sales. It's the way that I read the contract, but make sure you guys read through it. Those are just some highlighted points that highlighted in those proposals and contracts that I provided with you, to you guys today, but responsibility to read through it.
And they do use different software to sell online, one of them has a bigger, Dream Dirt has a bigger online auction.
So, so they're both, their, their fees are both the same, the two and a half percent?
Yes.
If they get both, if, if they get both buildings?
If they get, it's different if they were only selling one.
Okay, and Dreams are, if, if there's no sale, we don't have to pay anything?
That's correct, no sale, no fees.
If Midwest, if there's no sale, we have to pay three thousand dollars.
They're allocating three thousand dollars for advertising. Up to three thousand, it's on the back page of Midwest's contract. I've got a highlighted one. If there's a no sale, the seller is responsible for repaying that three thousand dollars. So we're up to what they expended for advertising. It's highlighted on the back page of the contract, just to tell you.
So based on that, I mean, I'm leaning towards Dream Dirt. And the code requires, based with, based with what I was read of the code, I appreciate him quoting the code too, is we can't get any less than our appraisal. So, so we're protected already, not only of the code, but with, you know, his, his knowledge of it. So I'm, I'm leaning towards Dream Dirt. But I'm okay using whatever the board, your board decides, and we just do both buildings with them? What do you guys think about that?
I met with Raleigh appraisal on Monday morning, so my information for my building will be coming back fairly soon. So whichever-
And public health hasn't quite decided.
Right, it's not, public health is down the road, but we have to address-
He knows that.
Both folks, both folks know that.
They all know that, they all know that, he made that very clear.
We have to address the selling of my building soon. So it'll take an action item on the board supervisors to enter into that contract with whoever that you guys select, either Dream Dirt or Midwest Land Management.
But your board will make a recommendation?
We recommend Dream Dirt.
Okay, all right, so do we wanna put this as a resolution next week?
Yeah, next week.
Okay. So could you work with them to work on a resolution for next week? Add that to the next week, please?
Thanks for having me work on that.
Thank you very much. Okay, so that moves to 2025 priorities or interview. Ryan, have you, have they given you anything yet?
They have sent me like a permitted use list in what, what would be permitted, what would be permitted by conditional use or special use. I, I wouldn't say that I'm comfortable with the amount of material that they've sent me at this time, I think that it should be more. And as I stated earlier, we're, we're nearing the end of August.
Can you light fire her in again?
Well, I think, Ryan, would you do something for me? Would you follow up with him and copy me? And then I can reply and ask him, get the lead out? I need to understand why this is taking so long, if you would mind doing that?
I, I, I would like to say that I can handle that, but yeah, if you wanna be, do you wanna be included?
You just need a little extra, folksy pushes, because they, remember, they did our comprehensive plan. And, and they know that as a board, we're, we're, we were very involved with that. So hopefully he knows that the board is also being very involved in this ordinance thing, he might move faster. So that's not a commentary on you, that's just, you're using the influence of another elected official to help you out. Or heck, just copy the whole board.
Do that.
Copy the whole board. And then, you know, we individually can reply, can't reply at all, but, yeah, I think that would, because it shouldn't be taking this long.
Yeah, I would have liked to have a meeting under our belt with, with the draft at this point.
Yes, I'm very disappointed that he has not done that.
And thank you for trying to stay up on it, keep it moving.
Thank you. All right, anything else that the board wishes to discuss, otherwise I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. And second, any discussion, all in favor, please vote aye. Aye, all votes, motion carries, we are adjourned.